Thank you so much. I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for February 12, 2024. First, I will call upon Councilmember Ambrose.
Please join me for a moment of silence. And now please rise in body or spirit to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Ms. Rush, you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Faray?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer? Councilmember Marriott?
Here. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Pfeiffer from the proceedings tonight.
Yes, thank you so much. Motion to excuse Councilmember Pfeiffer. All right, and all votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Councilmember Pfeiffer is excused. Thank you so much. Next, we have recognitions and communications. First, I will call upon Mayor Pro Tem Mormon to present the APWA Award for the Lake Arbor Restoration Project.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor this evening to present this award, and I understand Pete Adler from APWA Colorado Chapter is with us this evening. And this award is recognizing the Lake Arbor Restoration Project, and it is the project of the year in the environment category for a large community.
Good evening, Mayor Simpson and members of the City Council. I have to apologize if my voice is not behaving itself today. My name is Pete Adler, and I want to say this is a little deja vu for me. I did my first presentation in the City Council chambers in 1993, so it's got quite the history of doing things in here, that's for sure. But tonight, I'm here as the Colorado Chapter delegate to the American Public Works Association on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Colorado Chapter of APWA. Tonight, we would like to recognize the City of Arvada for the Lake Arbor Restoration Project. This is the 38th year the Colorado Chapter has recognized outstanding achievements in individuals in public works in Colorado through our awards program. The project categories are administration, disaster or emergency construction, environment, operations and maintenance, parks and trails, public outreach, structures, sustainability, and transportation. We also recognize a number of professional managers in different public works disciplines. The criteria for these awards include innovation for a better way to serve the public or internal customers. Did the project achieve all goals set? Can the communities and situations learn from this project? And was there cooperation with multiple parties to achieve these goals? This project clearly met all these criteria. As I said, the project we are recognizing is Lake Arbor Restoration. As a former Public Works employee, I'm familiar with issues regarding Lake Arbor over the years. This is a type of large issue, of multiple issue, large projects that the chapter is pleased to recognize. Lake Arbor had issues of foul smells, bank erosion, algae blooms, why isn't it being developed? How come this is like this? Been going on for decades. I would say the staff did a great job in looking at many aspects of this project. The water rights that might be associated with it, or how the water gets to Lake Arbor in the first place. The cause of the odors and their effects on the neighborhoods. The causes of shoreline erosion, and what became an extensive project to address all these issues, and what became an extensive progress to address all issues at hand. The chapter recognizes the systematic approach to the problem, starting with the history of the body of water, the purpose for the lake in the first place. We credit the city for taking the time to research and understand the nature of multiple issues and coming with excellent solutions for draining, dredging, and coming up with solutions to refill the lake. You showed great teamwork in identifying national, state, and local agencies to provide technical assistance and to work through issues as they arose. You should be very proud of how this project got to the final result. City Council and staff were seeking any effective way this project was completed. Therefore, on the behalf of the Colorado Chapter and American Public Works Association, I want to congratulate the City of Arvada for the Lake Arbor Restoration as the Large City Environmental Project of the Year. At this time, I'd like to turn the podium over to Melanie Walker.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'll keep it very brief. So, all of the criteria and all the issues that he talked about, I want to thank Sam Rogers for dealing with. He was really the rock star of this project, and I wanted to acknowledge him. He wasn't able to make the luncheon when it was presented to us, and so I wanted to make sure that he got the credit that he deserved for this. He joined Arvada shortly before the design was complete and took the design across the finish line. Then he managed the construction from start to finish. His previous experience was in design work for a private engineering company, so this was his first time managing a public project. He had no experience maneuvering through community concerns of the awful sewage smell and all of the things that Pete had just suggested, had just talked about, the dead fish, the snapping turtle relocations, and other challenges. He took on all the challenges with determination and a very kind heart. So, Sam, thank you for successful project and for not quitting.
Yes, you'll line up quickly for a photo. I want to say especially thank you all. This was a challenging project, but an important one for our community. So, a very sincere thanks to you all, and a recognition very well earned.
And I'll just echo that as home of, and District One being home of Lake Arbor is so much appreciated, this work. Thank you.
Next, I will call upon Councilmember Marriott for recognition of the Infrastructure Work Systems for APWA Reaccreditation.
Pete, you gonna stay up here for this?
I am hanging around.
Okay, good. The City of Arvada Public Works and Utilities Department, which make up the Infrastructure Work System, were recently reaccredited with the American Public Works Association. The accreditation formally recognizes the city for being in full compliance with the recommended management practices in APWA's Public Works Management Practices Manual. The purpose of accreditation is to promote excellence in the operation and management of public works agency, its programs, and its employees. Accreditation is designed to assist in the continuous improvement of operations and management and in providing a valid, objective evaluation of agency programs as a service to the public and the profession. The city was first accredited in 2016 with reaccreditations in 2020 and 2023. City is proud of the many hardworking, dedicated team members who help ensure the highest standards of excellence in maintaining this accreditation. Congratulations to the Infrastructure Work System for their achievement. And I have here a certificate signed by the mayor and all members of council, as well as a plaque from the, for designating Arvada as an accredited public works agency. So, I'll bring these up.
That's a snazzy plaque.
That's the big dog? Okay. Set this here for right now. Okay. Well, as I said, in addition to being a longtime member of the APWA Colorado Chapter Board of Directors, I'm also the immediate past chair of the APWA Accreditation Council, the national overseer of the program. Previously, I was the accreditation manager for Arvada when you received your first accreditation. I'm here to congratulate the City of Arvada Public Works and Utilities Departments on achieving their second reaccreditation. Kind of was alluded to, accreditation is the market for professionalism, indicating a public agency has made the commitment to continuous improvement in the delivery of public works, operations, and services. A team of evaluators from Washington State and Nebraska reviewed 119 practices to confirm both departments' compliance with internationally recognized practices applicable to the city's operations and responsibilities, that these standards are listed in the Performance Standards Manual. However, 119 might sound like a small amount. When you get reaccredited, all these standards that apply to your agency, we have 40 chapters, but Arvada doesn't have beach management. You don't have solid waste disposal, solid waste landfills, things like that, so you don't have to worry about those. So, of the 119, that's a third of the applicable standards. So, as preparing for your reaccreditation, you have to have every one of your standards that applies to your agency at 100% full compliance, because it's totally random as to which ones are going to be selected for that. So, Arvada had to be sure that all standards were met at full compliance. The department achieved 100% full compliance in those 119 practices. The evaluators also identified one model practice for right-of-way management slash code and permits enforcement. The right-of-way permitting webpage is easy to understand and link people to additional information. Allowing people who need to work in the right-of-way is an easy-to-follow online process that is fantastic. That was from the evaluators. There are currently 165 agencies in the United States and Canada who are accredited. I was privileged to be on the most recent accreditation agency, which is Burlingame, California. The city greatly, by the way, was the first accredited agency nationally in 1997. During that time, Golden was accredited in 2003, Aurora 2009, Cherry Hills 2015, 14, then us, Castle Rock in 2016, Centennial in 16, Rappahoe County in 2018, and Northland in 2023. I can also tell you that Greenwood Village, Denver, and Colorado Springs are planning on completing their accreditation process in 2024. So, this is a great exclusive company that Arvada keeps. So, congratulations to the job well done to accreditation manager Patty Carrico, Public Works Director Jaclyn Rhodes, and Utilities Director Sharon Israel for continuing to be recognized as an accredited agency and wear that accreditation badge proudly. And when I say that, I do want to share a story. My wife and I were going to spring training in Arizona about six years ago, and we're driving down the street, and I told her, I says, "Take a picture of that trash truck." She says, "What?" I says, "Take a picture of the back of that trash truck." The City of Peoria, Arizona, has the accreditation logo not just on the side of all their vehicles. They have it on the mud flaps of all their vehicles, and what I want is to show that on the mud flaps are their trash trucks. So, take great pride in what you do and show it off every place you can. So, thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you so much. The directors want to come down for a quick photo. And great job with all the reading, Mr. Adler. We really appreciate you. Please take care of that voice.
Yeah, I'm trying. Actually, the boy talks stronger than kids.
And council? So, you're aware Patty Carrico spends a lot of time. She is tenacious in making all this come together and happen. So, I really want to acknowledge her work and her tenacity.
Thank you so much, Patty. We appreciate it. We like women who get stuff done around here. And Jaclyn, to you and your entire team, congratulations. All right, so next on the agenda, we have public comment. I have one member of the public signed up for public comment, and that is Mr. Sam Greenberg.
Good evening. I'd like to invite Mr. Ben Pyatt to join me up here as well. Good evening, Mayor Simpson and members of council. My name is Sam Greenberg. I am with Congresswoman Brittany Pedersen's office. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening, and on behalf of Congresswoman Pedersen, I join you tonight to honor two Arvadans, Mr. Bobby McGee Lopez, winner of the Arvada Old Town Shindig Mural Contest, and Mr. Ben Pyatt, a longtime teacher at Arvada High School and the Arvada Driving School for their outstanding service and dedication to the community. In recognition of their achievements, Congresswoman Pedersen will be reading statements into the congressional record, the official recorded history of congressional proceedings to forever memorialize their contributions and accomplishments. I will now read the statements for Mr. McGee Lopez and Mr. Pyatt as Congresswoman Pedersen will read them on the House floor. For Mr. McGee Lopez, I rise today in recognition of Mr. Bobby McGee Lopez, the winner of the Arvada Old Town Shindig Mural Contest. This competition showcased the work of local artists competing for the next Old Town Mural Commission. Mr. Lopez was selected by a panel of art experts to complete the city's next Old Town mural project. It is my honor to recognize and congratulate Mr. Lopez on his achievement and thank him for his dedication for public arts. Colorado 7th Congressional District looks forward to enjoying his mural upon its completion. And for Mr. Pyatt, I rise today to recognize Ben Pyatt's dedication as a lifelong educator in our community. Mr. Pyatt has served generations of Arvada students and is retiring after 30 years in public education. In addition to his job as a math teacher, Mr. Pyatt helped teach student driving when Arvada High School was short on driving instructors. After the school disbanded the driver's ed program, Mr. Pyatt joined the Arvada Driving School, where he served for nearly three decades. Mr. Pyatt has played a key part in driver's education for Arvadans, teaching an estimated 20,000 people in this community how to drive over his career. It is my honor to recognize Mr. Ben Pyatt for his dedication to his community. Once again, gentlemen, thank you for all you have done for the people of Arvada and Colorado 7th Congressional District, and congratulations. Now, if it's all right, I would appreciate an opportunity to take a couple of quick pictures.
Absolutely. Would you guys maybe want to come in front of the dais and get all of us quickly?
Yeah, that would be great.
All right, come stand here and you'll get all of us. Thank you both. Do we have anyone else in chambers this evening who would like to give public comment on any topic? All right, Ms. Rush, do we have anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, we will close the first portion of public comment this evening and move into the consent agenda. So, we have three items on the consent agenda this evening, and they are: Item R24-018, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Arvada and Colorado Designs, Inc. for construction of the Stanley Lake Library Trailhead, CSB 23-VCN-119, in an amount not to exceed $742,000. Item number two, R24-019, a resolution approving an agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Grandview Station LLC for the grant of revocable encroachment license to accommodate an accessible pedestrian ramp for the tenant space at 7357 Grandview Avenue, Unit A, within the public right-of-way. Finally, we have R24-020, a resolution authorizing change order number five to an agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Hammond Infrastructure, Inc. for construction of 18-ST-40 Ralston Road, Yukon Street to Garrison Street in an amount not to exceed $17,724,045. Council will cast their votes. Councilmember Faray? Oh, apologies. You have to make the motion, don't you?
Sure do. I will move that R24-018, R24-019, R24-020 be approved.
There we go. Final votes to be cast. All right, that passes six to zero. Thank you all very much. And next on our agenda this evening, we have our resolutions. And we will kick it off with R24-021, a resolution authorizing a second amendment to the Master Intergovernmental Agreement by and between Apex Parks and Recreation District and the City of Arvada governing the lease and maintenance of certain facilities and parks, amending the ground lease for the indoor turf fields on Stanger Lutz Sports Complex. Ms. Anessa James, our Director of Vibrant Community Neighborhoods, I believe you have this one.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The City of Arvada and Apex Park and Recreation District entered into a master intergovernmental agreement governing the lease and maintenance of certain facilities and parks on June 28, 2022. We call this the Master IGA. The partners, Apex and Arvada, now wish to amend the Master IGA for the following purposes: One, to increase the square footage leased to Apex for an archery range from approximately 10,400 square feet to 13,100 square feet; Two, to grant a non-exclusive revocable license to Apex for first priority use of Arvada's outdoor tennis courts; and Three, to delegate and assign responsibilities related to the maintenance of the Ralston Central Splash Pad. The Arvada team recommends that the City Council approve R24-021, a resolution authorizing the Second Amendment to the Master Intergovernmental Agreement by and between Apex Park and Recreation District and the City of Arvada governing the lease and maintenance of certain facilities and parks and amending the ground lease for the indoor turf fields on the Stanger Lutz Sports Complex.
Thank you. I will open it to council questions or action. Mayor Pro Tem Mormon?
Thank you. I will make the motion.
All right, it's yours.
I move that R24-021, a resolution authorizing the Second Amendment to the Master Intergovernmental Agreement by and between Apex Park and Recreation District and the City of Arvada governing the lease and maintenance of certain facilities and parks and amending the ground lease for the indoor turf fields on the Stanger Lutz Sports Complex be approved.
All right, all votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. James. So, next on our list is R24-022, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One for financing the design, pre-construction services, and construction administration and the construction of the Purple Line. I have in my list that Ms. Sharon Israel, our Director of Utilities, is supposed to present.
I'll go ahead and present on behalf of Ms. Israel, although she is available on Zoom for any questions that council may have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rhodes.
As planned development expands in the northwest portion of the city, new infrastructure is needed to add capacity to our water system. This resolution and IGA concern the addition of a new water line expansion in Indiana Street north of Highway 72. This project will also improve resilience in service of finished water to the pumped zones in northwest Arvada. In particular, the city has identified providing looping to the Candelas Pump Station and the Candelas Tank as a priority system improvement. The beneficiaries of this improvement are all customers in the city's Pressure Zone 5, or known as the Purple Zone, and the areas within the pump zones that are north of Colorado Highway 72, generally the area of the JCMD. The Arvada team has negotiated an IGA with JCMD that provides a fair cost share of the project that represents the benefits to the city and JCMD. This IGA provides for financing of engineering services and construction. The Arvada team recommends that City Council approve R24-022, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One for the financing of the design, pre-construction services, construction administration, and construction of the Purple Line.
Perfect. Councilmember Ambrose?
I'd like to make a motion.
Seeing no other lights, it's yours.
I move that R24-022, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One for financing of the design, pre-construction services, construction administration, and construction of the Purple Line be approved.
All right, all votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you so much. Next, we have first reading, and I believe Councilmember Marriott would like to say something.
Y'all be not participating in this first reading, as I own at least two, and if, and possibly more properties that this might apply to.
All right, thank you. So, we will have a vote to recuse Councilmember Marriott for this particular first reading vote. All of remaining council will cast their votes. That passes five to zero with Councilmember Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Councilmember Marriott, you are recused for first reading. Council, or Mayor Pro Tem Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that CB24-003, an ordinance adding Article 7, prohibition of lead drinking water service lines and establishment of Arvada's lead service line replacement program to Chapter 102, Utilities, excuse me, of the Arvada City Code, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing set for March 4, 2024 at 6:15 p.m.
Thank you. Councilmember Ambrose?
Motion?
Actually, that is...
Oh, that is...
The first reading is the motion.
Okay.
It's okay. I understand. Councilmembers Davis and Ambrose, if you can cast your votes. That passes five to zero with Councilmember Pfeiffer being an excused absence and Councilmember Marriott being an excused recusal. Thank you all, and Councilmember Marriott, we'd like to welcome you back now. So, moving forward, next we have a motion to cancel the meeting for March 11, 2024. Okay, Councilmember Davis? Is your microphone on? There we go. That way the cameras can grab you.
I make a motion to cancel the March 11, 2024 council meeting.
All right, if all, all votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you so much. For members of the public that are curious, we have National League of Cities that week, and several of us will be attending in Washington, DC. So, next I will open the public hearings for CB24-001, an ordinance amending various provisions of Arvada's Land Development Code pertaining to floodplain regulation, ordinance number 4867, and I believe presenter Melanie Walter of our, is our floodplain administrator. She'll be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm Melanie Walter, floodplain administrator. I'm here to request to propose changes to the Land Development Code related to floodplain management. Next slide. So, in summary, the purpose of the proposed changes is to simplify data management and update Arvada's floodplain regulations. This is to move away from static paper maps and more toward digital mapping. It also codifies the prohibition of makeshift structures in high-risk flood zones. It'll allow more flexibility when reviewing floodplain permits related to fences and the ability to apply the Land Development Code to high-risk flood areas that are not yet mapped by FEMA and then make contact, the content in Chapter 50 of Arvada City Code a more standalone document so that future changes will only have to be changed in one place rather than in two. And then some other miscellaneous clarifications. All of these will be summarized a little bit better in future slides. These changes have been reviewed by various city staff, including community and economic development, the police department, our GIS staff, and engineering. They've also been reviewed by the state engineer to ensure nothing goes against state or federal regulations. We did go before Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago, and they approved it as proposed, but they had some recommendations for a change that I will go over in a later slide. So, next slide. Thank you. So, the first proposed change is to simplify mapping and data management of the floodplain boundaries. This includes auto-adoption of letters of map revision the moment they are effective. So, FEMA only requires, requires council action to adopt flood insurance studies, or FIS, to update in the flood insurance rate maps panel that impact Arvada. They don't need us to adopt letters of map revisions. Those are smaller boundary changes as a result of a development that doesn't affect the whole creek, just a small portion of it. So, if we auto-adopt those letters of map revision boundary changes, that'll enable our GIS staff to update the floodplain boundaries on their effective date rather than waiting for council action. So, in between those adoptions is usually years. So, we want to go more toward digital map rather than the static mapping. And then the official floodplain map is referenced throughout the code, so... So we want to change that to digital flood insurance rate maps, or DFIMS, that can be obtained by FEMA. Next slide. So in 2019, Mile High Flood District inserted into their regulations the prohibition of habitable structures in the floodplain to ensure the safety of the people living in those structures as well as the emergency responders. Since we are part of the Mile High Flood District, we auto adopt their regulations. This is just adding it to our code for easier access by our code enforcement staff. Then the second bullet item. Currently, there's an allowable fencing matrix in our Land Development Code that's very restrictive and absolute. I'd propose to remove it and replace it with more flexible language. However, the feedback that I got from, from the Planning Commission said that removing it wouldn't give enough guidance to the general public. So I'm proposing to keep the table and add some flexibility language in there. So when reviewing types and locations of fencing for the older communities, sometimes these communities were established before the floodplain boundaries were established. So it gives me more flexibility for those areas. Another proposed change will also allow staff to apply the Land Development Code regulations to non-FEMA boundaries. These boundaries have been established by Mile High Flood District Studies and accepted by the state, the Colorado Water Conservation Board. These studies are the basis of the FEMA map changes, but that process usually takes years. So this will allow us to regulate to those boundaries once the state accepts them. Next slide. And then other miscellaneous items. Oops, that's the last slide. One more behind. There we go. So Chapter 50 of the Arvada City Code, which is the stormwater chapter, will be updated with stormwater related issues. So the language in the Land Development Code will be changed to reference Chapter 50 instead of actually having the information in both places. It'll just reference Chapter 50 so that we only have to change it in one place rather than in two. And then the second two bullet items just codify our standard practice, which was a finding of our 2023 CRS audit. That's a community rating system that, which is a program that spells out activities and programs carried out by municipalities that can give our community flood insurance discounts. The more that we do to promote resiliency and emergency management, the more discount the community receives. Currently, we're at a class five, and there's only 10 other communities within Colorado that are a class five. And there's only one community that's better, and that's Fort Collins. So again, those two, the second two bullet items just codify what we already do in standard practice. And so this is so we can get credit for it next time around. And then we're also suggesting changing the approving authority for floodplain and stormwater issues to the city engineer rather than the CED director, since floodplain and stormwater divisions reside in public works. And then finally, making reference to the regulatory floodplain consistent throughout the Land Development Code. So currently, there are several different references, the hundred-year floodplain, there's special flood hazard area, there's hundred-year floodplain. We just wanted to change it to regulatory floodplain to make it consistent throughout the code. Next slide. In conclusion, staff feels that the changes are in compliance with all of our codes and criteria as well as Mile High Flood District, state, and federal regulations, and recommend approval of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Faray.
Yes, how many houses are in the floodplain that we have to date?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I could find out.
Which is generally?
There are hundreds.
Okay, so when I was looking at the fencing component, I appreciate the shift towards flexibility, but I'm concerned that six out of the eight fence types require a case-by-case basis review by you. And I'm worried that might be a bit of an administrative burden on you and maybe bottleneck some of the.
It hasn't been. I really don't get that many. I, I've gotten maybe five in the last six months, you know? So it really isn't a burden, and I would much rather have the flexibility. Sometimes it's a like-for-like replacement, and it's prohibited by that table, but it's already, has been there for decades. So it, it's, would not create a bottleneck.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or I'll take a motion? Councilmember Faray is.
Yes.
Yes, she'll take it. Perfect.
Move back up to the motion. I move that CB 24-001, in ordinance amending various provisions of Arvada's Land Development Code pertaining to flood regulation be approved. Wait, is that the right one? Yeah. Be approved on final reading number 4867 and ordered published by title only.
Perfect. All right, all votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you so very much, and we appreciate that. All right, so I will close the public hearing portion of tonight's proceedings and move to a public comment for five minutes. Is there anyone in the chambers this evening that wishes to provide public comment at this time? Ms. Rush, anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, I will open reports from city council. Do any council members have something they'd be willing to? It is a quiet one.
Well, I will quickly note that our city team and council conducted our council strategic retreat on Friday. It was an excellent event. A huge kudos, Ms. Gillis, to your team, particularly Noel and Elizabeth, who worked very, very hard. It was extremely well done, and I look forward to seeing the key takeaways that come out of that session. And now, Ms. Gillis, over to you then.
Thank you. If you wouldn't have mentioned the strategic retreat, I would have, I was going to thank you, everybody. All of you were engaged the entire time, and it was a long day. We do feel like we've got some great information to serve as foundation for what we'll be bringing back to you for the strategic plan. So thank you for that. Also want to mention there is no meeting next Monday. President, in honor of President's Day, it's a holiday at the city. Next meeting is March 4, where you will have a business meeting and three workshops. One is on public safety with a police department update, one on traffic speed management, and another one on pool facility naming. So Monday, March 4, will be long. So we'll have, you have the information that you need.
Perfect. Well, tonight is short, so I guess it's just to try it off.
It's a balance.
Yeah. Ms. Morris?
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
All right, and with that, that's almost a record. We are adjourned.